Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's work session for the Portsmouth Planning Board. There is one item on the agenda tonight, and I'd like to have the meeting run from 7:00 to 9:00 at the latest. So, item one I'll read in for the work session, which is item A, Discussion on Possible Zoning Amendments to Permit Senior Housing Facilities in the Office Research OR District Subject to Certain Conditions. This session continues the Planning Board's Review of a City Council Referral on Bothwick Village. Before we start, the portable mic is on if you need to use it, Malcolm. So, you can, I'm just going to have Rick Tenter give us a little information on the revised draft of the senior housing ordinance.
Yes, this, the reason I put this together, I put this handout together that has the red and blue on the cover page all the way through it, but that's how you identify it. I was a little bit confused because we had our September, the draft that we handed, sent out to you in advance of this meeting, which was the September 2008 draft, and then the package that you got from the proponent also had a draft that was dated September 8th, but it wasn't really clear, it wasn't clear to me initially anyway, that there had been changes, significant changes made in it. So, I knew that the affordable housing and workforce housing had been taken out, but I went through it today just to compare the two versions. And so, I prepared this draft, which says at the bottom, or the top and bottom, September 2008 staff draft with April 2009 changes proposed by Bothwick Forest LLC. And so, the, that should be, rather than the one in the, in the back of the book that was given to you, that one says September 8th, but it really isn't. So, I just wanted to clarify that they had, the proponents had, I guess, intended to give you some more information or to compare the two documents together, but I wanted to make sure that you had this before you so you could see the changes that were made. So, the things that are, that in the, comparing the 2008 draft to the draft that's in the book, on the handout that I've just given you, the red are items that the draft in the book has taken away from the September 8th draft, and the blue underlined are things that the draft in the book has added to the September 2008 draft. Is that clear?
So, just to be clear, Rick, that the final tab that says draft ordinance and what they provided to us for this meeting, it's titled, it's titled Staff Draft, September 2008. It has nothing to do with anything that's staff, city staff prepared.
Well, it started from that, and then it has changes to it.
Right.
Yeah. This is not the staff draft.
It's applicant draft.
Yes, great. Just wanted to clarify that, because I think that will help to, and maybe when you're going through the presentation, you can talk about the things, the changes that you made and why you proposed the changes.
It was never intended that what was in the book was intended to be perceived as the staff's draft. What I intended to do was compare them side by side, but Rick's done a better job. So, in terms of laying this out the way he has, I think it's very clear, and I'll actually use it in my comments. Thank you. Any questions from any of the board members before Malcolm begins? No, Malcolm?
Here's the new Malcolm. Shorter, left gray here. I'm Mark Stebbins, resident of Portsmouth, and Michael Kane, John Kane, and a fellow named Mark Schleicher, and I own this property at Bothwick, on Bothwick Avenue. And I'm going to go through a PowerPoint presentation. We met with the, with the city manager and the staff, I would say, six weeks ago, to discuss where this project had gone, where it's going, and the number of presentations we've made to the Planning Board. And the discussion, basically, we decided that there have been a lot of iterations and a lot of discussion, and probably because some of the Planning Board members have changed, we should probably start again because we have made a number of changes since our original proposal, and just start everybody from the beginning and, and go through the whole project. The other suggestion that was made is that we compare this project to similar projects in the area. And we picked a project in, another project in New Hampshire, and another project in Maine, which are very, very similar to the project we're proposing. The two big changes from what you've seen, and this is written up in the letter to you all, the two big changes are, A, the density. We've, in our discussion with the staff, they, they thought it would be appropriate to bring down the density, and so, we did that, and you'll see that. And the other one was, there has been a concern that we had independent living and assisted living, what happens when people need nursing home? And the concern was that is the city of Portsmouth going to have to take care of these people once they need nursing home facilities? Will they just be summarily kicked out of our building and, and, and once they need nursing home facilities, be under the care, custody, and control of the city of Portsmouth? So, we've put a nursing home component into this. So, now, it, the project becomes much more of a CCRC, which is a Continuing Care Retirement Community. And Rick had some, and will go, in your book is a, is a definition of that. But first, just to remind everybody where the project is. Gail, ta-da. This is the proposed site, and I stole Malcolm's pointer. So, this is the proposed site.
Hey, Mark. Mark, do you want to just grab that?
Oh, that other mic? Okay, I can just.
Or you can stand right there.
Yeah, I'll stay right there, thanks.
Thank you.
This is the proposed site, and it's, you can see the Portsmouth Regional Hospital, Liberty Mutual, medical office buildings, another medical office building, and, and you can see our entrance right off, it's right away, right off of Bothwick Avenue, and the site is approximately 37 acres. So, we'll get into that more, but just so everybody knows the location, Islington Street is right here. So, let's go to the next. This is the definition of a Continuing Care Retirement Community, CCRC, and it's a residential development, multiple levels of senior adult accommodations, including assisted living, independent living, and nursing home, enabling residents to live at a single location as their medical needs change over time. This is very typical, it's been around for 25, 30 years, and we're going to compare our project with two other similar CCRCs. So, just another reminder on the piece of land is that the, and you've heard this from Malcolm, but he told me I should say it one more time, that the land, under the master plan, this particular piece of land was designated for further review. And frankly, I think what we've been going through is very helpful for, for just that. We've been going through further review and had a number of meetings about that, and I think that's why we feel strongly that this is an appropriate use, because we're, we're not really, during the last master plan, no one really came up with what they thought was the appropriate use and left it the way it was. So, going on to the next slide, Gail. So, location off, right, right off of Bothwick Avenue, 37, almost 38 acres, excluding wetlands, 26 acres. We're talking about 330 independent living units, 50 assisted living units, and 30 nursing homes, 410 total versus, I think our last one was 482. So, our recommendation of the density requirements are 3,000 square feet of land per independent living, 1,500 per square feet of land for each assisted unit or nursing home unit, which would leave 73% of the lands, of the site, open. Now, this 3,000, well, I'll keep going on, size of independent living units is 500 to 2,000 square feet, and this is a little bit of a change from our last one. We, in our studies and comparisons, and in the discussion of affordability, we found that we could build, we could build a very adequate 500-square-foot unit, and as it was smaller, it would bring down the price. So, you'll see, as we get into the comparison of pricing, how that's reflected. Height of the buildings, four stories over parking, and that was one of the, the questions from the staff is, what are you proposing as a limited height? You know, right now, that area is, is zoned for 60-foot-high buildings, office buildings, or whatever, you know, hospitals, whatever can be built there, and we're not talking about that, we're basically talking about four stories with, with at-level parking. If there are any questions, please don't hesitate to jump in. Rick?
The way you just said, you said at-level parking, I thought that you had said underground parking.
Well, excuse me, it's, the way the site is, Rick, is it's not a flat site. So, our, in our mind, what we're going to do is have a drive-in, so it would be half underground, okay? So, where you drive in will be at, at grade, but when you drive in, you'll be underground. The other, the opposing wall, the opposite wall, will be fully underground.
So, you could say it would be four to five stories in building height?
Yeah, I mean, the, the way code definition, I think, would be that we'd be four stories if we got enough of this underground.
But the sentient being looking at it might see three floors of residential plus of something with parking.
No, it would be four floors of residential, David.
And it seems to me, then, unless the parking's underground, you're five.
Okay, so, we're five with, we're four stories of residential living over five, over a level of parking. We're trying to keep the parking under the building. Next. So, you can see some of how we see this, of the project, and we'll show you some more pictures of how we see the project coming together and looking. The architecture is very New England-style home-looking. Economics, our entrance fee, which used to be $270,000, now, we're talking about $225,000, and that's, that's reflecting the smaller units, up to $600,000, $600,000. The, so, just to reiterate how this works and how all these projects work, basically, it's like you're purchasing it, but it's really in a long-term lease. So, you put down, if you have a 500-square-foot unit, you put down, you, you pay $225,000 for a life lease, okay? And then, your estate, assuming you, what was it, celestial, what you go to your celestial, I forget what the word was.
Departure.
Departure, or whatever, while you're living there, or when you move out, if you've decided to go somewhere else, you get 90% of the entrance fee refunded upon you leaving and someone else reoccupying the space. Very, very typical. Monthly fees for services to residents, $1,800 to $6,500. Now, this is at a higher level than we talked about before. The reason it's at a higher level is because of the nursing home component. Basically, the way these work is you go in, independent living, you, you pay your entrance fee, and then, as you need the services, you get placed, if you need assisted living, you get placed in assisted living, if you get, if you need nursing home, you get placed in a nursing home, but your fee is still the equivalent of what you were paying in the independent living space. So, basically, the people in the independent living areas are subsidizing the assisted and nursing home units, okay? Your fee doesn't go up as you go into an area where you need more care. Does everybody understand that? If you don't, we should talk about it. Everybody feels comfortable with that? So, basically, okay, yes.
So, you sort of lock in at the start?
Yes, well, you lock in with, you know, with inflation and so forth, so your fees will go up, but for, for a nursing, a good assisted living in Portsmouth is $6,000 a month, a good nursing home is $9,000 a month. So, we wouldn't charge those fees, so you, you wouldn't be locked in at $2,000, and then, all of a sudden, you move in, you know, you have a heart attack, go to the hospital, have to come back into the nursing home section, you don't get charged that $9,000. Your fee still stays at the 2,000. So, basically, it pushes everybody's fee up. I suppose it's sort of like insurance, you know, you're paying for your need of the future, future need of the nursing and assisted living. Once again, that is very typical of the, that's the way it works in these CCRCs. Any other questions on that?
I have a question that may be kind of apropos of nothing here, but it just strikes me that if you buy a house, and you, in a normal era, 10, 10 years later, you sell the house, you make.
Make money.
You make money.
Yeah.
Here, you're buying a unit, 10 years later, your estate will get out 90% of what you put in.
A very good question. Why don't you get the increased value?
Exactly, right.
And, and once again, this is why, this is a very typical, and you'll see as we compare it to other, this is a very typical scenario. But basically, you try to keep the fees low, and you, you know, like a typical condo, you'd be paying a fee that would include a big hunk of money for capital improvements, okay, for future cap, you know, redoing the roof, putting money into the boiler and that type of thing. And we all, as we all know, it's never enough, and so, there's always special assessments. You think of this sort of as your, your capital improvement fee and your special assessment. So, we don't have to put that in the regular fee. So, when someone leaves, basically, we're counting on, not necessarily having this type of economy, but we're counting on the value of the unit going up. That plus the 10% is put into a fund that then gets used to upgrade and redo the, the unit itself, okay, and to redo the common areas, the roofs, and, so, you, you want to keep this current. And so, it's just like a hotel, every six years, you know, in our hotels, we go through, and it's all new furniture, new carpet, new paint, et cetera, and that's what these fee, this differential is used for, is to go back and upgrade, you know, when we need new roofs, we need new living room furniture and so forth, so the place doesn't get ratty.
David? The way you phrase it, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding it, too. So, if I paid, if somebody pays $600,000 for a unit, five years later, they decide to move out for whatever reason, and it's gone up another, say, $10,000, 610, are you getting 90% refundable of the 600 or the new price?
Of the 600, of the original fee, David.
Right.
So, what we're using is that 10% and any increase in value.
Any capture.
To put back into the project.
But, but the next person coming in, I'm sorry, Mr.
No, am I supposed to be doing that, John, or?
No, it's all right. It's a work, it's a work session.
Okay.
Just, just so I understand, so, if it goes up by 20% in the X number of years that someone owns it, that person leaves, they get 90% of what they paid, the next person coming in buys at the current market value.
Exactly, exactly.
Sorry, thank you.
Yep, so, that 20% increase, let's take a $300,000 unit, that would be a $60,000 increase, plus they'd leave 30 behind, so that's $90,000 that would be going to the, to the fund to be used for upgrades and, and, first of all, has to be, you know, someone's been in there 10 years in that unit, that unit has to be redone. You know, by that time, you need a new kitchen, you need new bathroom facilities, et cetera, which is expensive in and of itself. And then, and then, so that eats up a good portion of the increase in the value, and then, the, the 90%, that 10%, really is used, for the most part, for the common area fees, common area improvements. Anything else on that? So, one of the questions that came up was demographics, and we talked to the people of these two other projects, there's no, there's no CCRC group that puts all the demographics together and can tell you where everybody comes from, because each project is very different. But the two projects we talked to said, and, and so, a third came from the, the close area, the, the town itself and contiguous towns. A third came from a larger area, a larger like county-like area, and then, a third from longer distance due to relationships. And that's what we anticipate the same. We'd say a third probably from, from Portsmouth and contiguous towns, a third from the larger regional area, Stafford and Rockingham County, and a third from longer distances to come be near your children, or, or you might be coming back because you're a UNH grad, or you grew up at, at Pease, you know, or worked at Pease or Portsmouth Naval Shipyard, and you, you're coming back here to retire. The land use, the presently zoned, it's presently zoned office research, the site would allow about 185,000 square feet of office space, fully built out. The fiscal impact to the municipality as office, it's 350, now, this is our calculations, and it was done through an economist who made a presentation a long time ago, 359,000 versus, now, it was $1,000,009, the original proposal, but now, it's $1,006,000 because there are less units.
Mark, what's the source of the 185,000 square feet of office?
We did, we did some master plans on how, how much would fit there, and we did, I didn't bring it with me, but we did do, we did present that to the Planning Board at one point of how we'd get, get 185,000 square feet, you know, with all the setbacks and so forth.
Yeah, I remember that before, and I just wondered if that, so, that was based on actual, kind of real-world, on the ground.
Yes.
Did you have your wetlands data by then?
Yeah, yeah, we had the wetlands data right when we bought the place, because it was already done by the previous owner, and then, we updated it, so.
Don, have a question.
Just a, sort of a follow-up. On the other end, the 359,000, the number that sticks in my head, it was 146, which was originally noted as the tax revenue for the office research. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but that, those two numbers are pretty drastically different.
We originally had 146,000 for the, the tax revenue from the, the office?
That's what sticks in my head, approximately that number, and please, I could be totally wrong, so if I am, please.
I don't remember that, but.
There were, there were two numbers that were shared on both. One was the gross number, which is 349,000 and $1,000,009, and then, the economist calculated the, the impact of those facilities to the town, and then, netted out what they expected the, what the municipal cost to maintain, you know, the impact, the, the cost impact of the city, and netted out.
Police, fire.
142,000, and netted out to like a million two or a million.
That was a net number.
That was a net number, and, and it got too confusing, so we just got rid of those, and we're just using the gross numbers.
Okay, good, thank you.
Gail, you're up. Okay, once again, this is just a reiteration of what we've discussed before, but Sargent Consulting did a, a market demand on office, a report on market demand for the office space, they did it for us, and then, they did it, I think they did it again for the Economic Development Group here in Portsmouth, and basically said that the, there is a readily identified 19 to 25-year supply of vacant land and buildings that would accommodate new office expansion. Based on what's going on today and the, and the vacancies that are increasing, it's probably more than that. It's very unlikely that, that any new spec of these buildings will be built in Portsmouth for quite some time to come with the vacancies that are, that are ongoing. And, you know, as it relates to this, you'll see that there still is, is a demand for the type of project we're discussing, and I think, you know, the economics, the world economics have changed completely since we started discussing this project, and I think we're ve, much more likely to get construction jobs and good jobs out of the CCRC project than leaving this and, and as a zoned office, because I think it's very unlikely in the next, in the, in the near future at least, that, that any office space would be built here.
Don, you have a question?
I just want to clarify something, and this afternoon, I was reviewing the, the minutes of the prior meetings and work sessions, I made a note to myself about that study, and it says that that study did not look at the need for medical offices, that study focused on general office space, is that correct?
I think what happened is, is what Cindy discussed at one point, is that this corridor, there may be some demand for medical office space in this corridor, a big, a big demand for medical office space in this corridor, and frankly, there's about 35, 40,000 square feet of empty medical office space right now in that corridor, and there is room to build more medical office space, and what we would hope is that our project would be the thing to spur that on. If we bring in these people near the Portsmouth Regional Hospital, obviously, elderly people are more prone to, to medical needs, other than people who present to Planning Boards. And, and, so, we feel we'd help create more demand for medical office space if this project went ahead.
But just to clarify, that study did not focus or, or deal with medical.
No, it, it.
General study.
General study.
Okay, thank you.
Exactly, exactly.
But I think the point that's being made is the existing marketplace, this 40,000 square feet of medical office right in the vicinity of the hospital, that's empty.
So, anyway, one of the other issues that we discussed was the neighborhood impact, that the architectural design would lead to a nice transition between office and residential. If this land were all office, the, there'd be a lot of people looking out at office buildings who are living along Islington Street. We did a traffic study, and the traffic generated during the off-peak hour, would be during the off-peak hours for the proposed use, so we really wouldn't have any major impact on the traffic on Bothwick, which you all know at peak hours, most of you know at peak hours, is cumbersome, and if this were office, it would just exacerbate that, the present problem on Bothwick Avenue. Our goal would be to have one major access off of Bothwick Avenue and just a emergency onto Islington, an emergency access off, onto Islington. This obviously will depend on traffic studies, Planning Board reviews, and that type of thing, but we put that up as really our goal, because we don't think we're going to need for our residents to go out on Islington.
Hey, Mark, have you done any preliminary traffic analysis to determine if that is feasible?
Yes, yeah, we, we had, who did we have as our traffic study? I forget.
Apple Door.
Apple Door did a, did a, a traffic study at the beginning and showed the comparisons between office and, and, and our project, and it was, you know, it was significantly ours.
But I'm saying, have you looked at a traffic analysis for this project going out onto Bothwick? Will that work?
Yes, yes, and, and they did that. Yes, yes. And, and they did that analysis, and felt that it would be a minimal impact on Borthwick Avenue, versus the office, which would have a major impact on Borthwick. And that would, I think that's probably, I'm two years old now, so that would have to be updated and so forth. And our use, we feel, is, is much more compatible with residential uses in the area. You know, it, one of our examples was that you wouldn't have parking lot lights on all night, you know, doing acres and acres and acres of parking. But, but we felt that this was a nice transition, much like the hotel we built over on, over on, near, off of Portsmouth Avenue. And we felt that was a great use, and the neighbors, I think, have found that's a great use. And it buffers the, the office from the residential. Environmental impact, you'll see what, what much less impact this has on the environment, but it maintains more wildlife habitat than an office, larger area for recreation, four hundred and forty-one parking spaces, underbuilding, we should probably say, versus underground, semi-underground, and surface, and five point nine-three acres less of pavement for this project versus an office. We're on to the next one. So, this is just a comparison of our initial project that we proposed to what we're talking about now. So, the purpose for independent and assisted versus independent, assisted, and nursing for the new proposal. Density, four hundred and ten independent units versus three hundred and thirty independent units. So, eighty less there, seventy-two assisted units versus fifty assisted units, so twenty-two less assisted, and thirty nursing versus no nursing. So, a total of four hundred and ten units versus four hundred and eighty-two. Size of units, we've decreased that somewhat, nine hundred to twenty-five hundred square feet versus five hundred to two thousand square feet. Entrance fees, two hundred and seventy to four hundred and fifty. Our research told us that it would be better to have more five hundred square foot units, they're, they're strong in demand, at two twenty-five, and then the bigger units at six hundred thousand dollars. Monthly fees, sixteen hundred to two, average of two thousand a month, on the, when we didn't have the nursing component involved. And this would be eighteen hundred for the smaller units, up to sixty-five hundred a month for the larger units. Part of that is, frankly, the larger units even subsidize the nursing and independent more. Those people can afford to pay the bigger fees. Tax revenues, we've discussed that, down from a million nine to a million six, just because of the, the
Counsel Dwyer, did you have a question?
I should have asked this earlier, and you might have said this, Mark. Is the assumption that you can enter this at any level, or do you save the nursing for people who have been in independent or assisted?
We discussed that, and I think what we will do is have some people enter the, so the nursing, because we're going to have to build the nursing right away.
Right.
And so, we'd have some people, our, the way these work is that you try to get help, people who are healthy when they move in, because you want them there for a number of years. You don't want them, it hurts your economics if they move in, and two months later, they go into the nursing. And that's the way everybody does it. They, you basically, it's like a ball player. You go through a physical before you're, you're allowed in. And so, we would probably have some people in the nursing and assisted living right away at more market rates until our people need them, exactly.
Don?
Two quick questions. One is the number of jobs in the new configuration versus the old. The old had an estimate of eighty. The new is?
Actually, because of the, the higher nursing component, we think it's going to be closer to a hundred.
Okay, and the second question?
And it's more, more of a skilled job, Don, than, than we had before because of the nursing component. So, we
And the, the tax revenue, again, is gross versus net dollars?
Yes, yes, sir. Okay, moving on. So, here are the three properties we're comparing, comparing, excuse me. Riverwoods and Exeter, which I think most people are familiar with, and Piper Shores and Scarborough, Maine, which are both beautiful, award-winning projects, and Borthwick Village, which we hope someday will be a beautiful, award-winning project.
What is that, a photo of the Borthwick Village?
This is a, a project similar to what we'd like to design.
Okay, is that the one in Mass?
Yes, yeah.
The one that you presented originally?
Exactly, exactly.
And that's, what's the, what's the height on, on that?
Well, you can see it right here. That's three stories, and it has parking under.
Okay, so that's the same one?
Right.
So, yours would be one more residential story?
One more story, exactly. So, you can see in terms of what they look like, they basically look the same. They're very residential-looking, much nicer than an apartment building. And here are some interiors. But our concept is very similar to the concepts they built at Piper Shores and Riverwoods. Once again, here are the, here's Riverwoods, which is a beautiful project, and continues to, to add on, and Piper Shores, which I think is pretty well-done, and then Borthwick Village, in its infancy. So, here is, and this is in all of your books, our property comparison chart. Years established, Riverwoods started in nineteen ninety-four, and there have been two major expansions since. One is proposed major expansion. Piper Shores started in two thousand and one, and had an expansion in two thousand and four, and obviously, we haven't started. This, I think, is very interesting. Riverwoods is ninety percent, ninety-seven percent occupied. Studios are waitlisted for six to seven years. Most apartments are waitlisted for three years, and cottages are waitlisted for five to six years. And they're just taking deposits on an, on an expansion that they hope to start this year.
Mark, what, what do you expect your proportion of studio versus ones and twos?
What we did is, we said in our proposal that we would have no more than forty percent of any one unit. Because I know there was a concern that, oh, you guys are just going to go out there and build all big units and sell them to, to wealthy people. And frankly, that's not our goal. Our goal is to have a nice mix. So, in our proposal, we, we say there would be no more than forty percent of any one unit.
So, that means you could have forty percent independent, forty percent assisted, and twenty
No, 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 I'm talking about size, size of units.
Oh, okay, got you.
Yeah. So, no, we had, you'll see, we have, we'll get down to the number of assisted and, and what we're proposing, assisted and nursing. But I'm talking about the breakdown of the, of the independent.
So, you could have forty percent ones, forty percent two-bedrooms, and twenty percent studios?
Exactly, exactly.
Anthony?
Actually, the studios are the ones that are in the most demand.
Right.
So, it's more likely we'd have a higher percentage of studios.
Anthony?
How does it work, Mark? Looking at your figures in terms of these places being sold out, if someone then needs to transition from the assisted to the nursing, but your nursing is full, how does that scenario play out?
Well, here, here's our thought process in this whole thing. Our goal is, when someone is in independent living, keep them there as long as possible, okay? And, and we're not going to give anybody any special services, but let's say your father and mother are in there, and your mother's sick and your father's healthy. And your, your mother says, you know, and really, your mother should be in assisted living. And basically, we'll allow your father to bring in help, so that your mother can stay with your father. So, we, we're trying to delay, but now, in that case, we wouldn't provide the extra help, okay? The only time you'd get the extra help is if you went to assisted living. But if you wanted to bring in independent, you know, visiting nurses and healthcare professionals to come in and help, you know, you pay the extra money for your mother to stay in, in the independent living, that'd be great. Now, there's a very, very, very fine line between assisted and nursing, okay? And actually, in Portsmouth recently, a nursing home turned over most of its units to assisted, because nursing right now is really for critical care. And by critical care, I mean, you have a big car accident. The hospital wants you in there for five days max, you know, and your insurance company wants you in there for five days. They patch you up, put the pins in you, and they send you off to a nursing home now, okay? It's, it's no longer can you stay in the hospital for three months. As we all know, as our wives have had children and so forth, I mean, it's, it's, or the women who have had children, you're out of there quickly. So, nursing homes primarily now are for critical care patients. Now, we will have critical care patients, you know, an eighty-nine-year-old fellow or woman will have a major heart attack. They're right near the hospital, they rush them over to the hospital, they get them better, and, and, but they have to leave the hospital, so what they'll do is go into our nursing home. So, I, I'm, I'm just giving you the overall landscape before I answer your question. So, if someone is in assisted living, and they need nursing-like care, and there's no room in the nursing home, it's going to be all in the same building, so the nursing specialist can be, will move it right close to the nursing home, and, and, the nursing beds, excuse me, and they'll be able to take care of them.
But, so then, let's, let's say, if I'm in independent living, and I'm by myself, and I have some sort of medical ailment, or something arises where I suddenly need the, at least the assisted, if not the nursing home care, and, sort of hypothetical, I don't have the money to bring in someone privately, you're full in the assisted living or nursing? Do I, would I, ultimately, in that scenario, would I be forced to leave?
No, no. But basically, it would, the care would be given to you in your independent, if, in your independent living unit, we would give you that type of care you needed if we didn't have facilities available. Very unlikely, with this ratio, we wouldn't have facilities available.
Thank you.
Counsel Dwyer.
Well, it's actually interesting, having a personal experience with this, and you can kind of imagine it. People will do anything to stay in their independent unit, because of course, that's
Their independence.
That's their independence, and that's what they're hanging on to. So, the desire, the much requested desire, at least through our family, and I saw it with other people there, was to do what you're saying, Mark, to ask if the meals could be brought to, if the nurse could see them in their unit and whatever. So, the press, the peer pressure or the psychological pressure is to really stay where you are and not, not move up the cycle.
John?
But I guess, does that answer your question?
It, it, and I fully appreciate the desire. I'm saying, if something happens where even your desire, but medically, you have to have something more, I just wouldn't want to see a scenario where someone has sort of bought into this because of the thought that they'll move through the steps, they're forced to move to a step more quickly, and because of a space issue.
Then they'll get the care in their unit. The, the issue is, we really, it's more expensive to give the care in the unit, so you want to move them into the assisted and nursing if there are spaces available. If there are no spaces available, then they'll get the care in the unit.
So, Don?
I, I guess I have to ask the question. Take it to the next logical step. The care can't be given in that independent unit. The nursing home is full. What, the nursing component is full. What mechanism is in place? I don't know, an appeals process, or, you know, a medical appeals process or something? I think my concern would be someone that, that is struggling, like, like Chris points out, and they want to stay independent. They can't stay independent, for whatever reason. It's the, it's too much medical care needed and that sort of thing.
Mm-hmm.
I can actually envision a scenario where someone would be forced to move. And I'm not very
Oh, and, and you move out of their unit, out of the, out of the whole project?
Well, the nursing is full.
Yeah.
Assisted is not going to work for them, and certainly, independent isn't going to work for them.
Well, now, let's think of this, okay? Let's, let's talk about this as a
I'm not saying that that's the case, but I just, it's the next logical step.
Right, but let's, you really have to think about this, because we are, we are in a marketplace, okay? So, we do that to two people. How many people are going to buy after that? You know, it, it makes no market sense to say, Don, we got no place for you, you're out. Because Don's family, and everybody Don knows, knows that he was thrown out on his ass, because he, he, you know, we didn't have, boy, there's nobody going to come to our project anymore, because they know, so, really, marketplace
At one time, the course was hospital was going after people's homes for not paying their medical bills, and they seem to be still doing pretty well.
Well, well, that's a different, that's a, that's a whole different story, and we can get into how we deal with people who have financial difficulties.
I would like to do that. Maybe not right this minute, but
And when you're ready, we're, we're ready to talk about it.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to, I, I don't know about Riverwoods, but I have some knowledge of some other places, including Piper Shores. And I, I guess I want to challenge you on the, on the idea that it's for kind of the, the non-elderly, non-chronics, that it's more for the urgent care, because you go to the nursing level at Piper Shores, and it's all extremely old people who, who are there, that's their last place. They're not there, they haven't, I don't think there's, there are very few people who go out, who actually, once they go in there, actually leave there. And the other part of that is that the, that the units aren't, aren't interchangeable. The, the assisted living floor is the same size as the nursing care floor, and there are twice as many units on the nursing care floor. So, obviously, the nursing units are half as big as the assisted living units, and it also has to do with common area space and so forth. But it, what, so I, so I think that there's not as much transferability as, or interchangeability as you're suggesting in this particular model. And I guess the question that jumped out at me was, both Riverwoods and Piper Shores, Piper Shores has a much higher percentage of nursing care and assisted living to independent living, and they have, and both developments have more nursing care than assisted living, and you've kind of flipped that, that, that ratio the other way. So, is there something, is, is, do you feel like Piper Shores doesn't have enough assisted living?
Yes.
And, and so, it should have, because, okay?
Yes, but recently, since both of these were built, recently, the demand for nursing homes has gone down. There's a much larger demand for independent living, I mean, excuse me, for assisted living. And so, at the time those were built, that was, that was the correct thought process, is that there'd be more need for nursing than there is for, for, for assisted. But I would bet you that there are a number of people in that nursing in Piper Shores that could be taken care of in, in assisted. And, and I'm not going to tell you that they're interchangeable, because someone who, you know, is in need of urgent care should be in, in a nursing home. But there are some people who are in nursing homes that don't need to be in nursing homes, can be in assisted living. So, the new scenario is less, less nursing home units and more assisted units. And it's, because, and the whole reason is, it's, it's cheaper to take care of a person in an assisted scenario than it is in a, and it's, it feels a little bit more independent living in an assisted versus the nursing.
Counsel Dwyer?
Sorry.
Well, I, I know at Riverwoods, and I don't know how they classify this, but they have quite a large dementia population. So, I don't know if that fits in, I, I'd always thought that was fitting into nursing at Riverwoods, but I'm not sure about that.
It is, yeah.
In, in the nursing rather than assisted. So, that is, that colors kind of the mix at Riverwoods, because I think that's accepting a, kind of a different category. And I don't know if there's any plan for specialization here, I guess would be a question, or, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, absolutely. If there's a dementia, if there's a person who has dementia, who's in our independent living, okay, we wouldn't take them, after we've matured, we wouldn't take them from outside.
Right.
But we would certainly handle them inside.
Right, because they wouldn't, they wouldn't be in appropriate fit for the mix.
Right. So, I'll just keep going down this, and, so you can see, the, these projects are very successful. And the entrance age, we've all got the same entrance age. Did I already do this? No, okay. Maybe I need the dementia, but anyway, entrance age is sixty-two. Entrance age is sixty-two, size of units, five hundred at Riverwoods, starting to eighteen hundred, and they'll go up to two thousand in the units available in 2010, their new units will be up to two thousand. In Piper Shores, five hundred to almost two thousand, and we're talking about five hundred to two thousand square feet. Entrance fees, Riverwoods...
Excuse me, Mark?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Just to clarify, you mean there, the size of independent units?
Independent units, absolutely, absolutely. The entrance fees ranging from one hundred and sixty-two thousand to six hundred and fifty thousand in Riverwoods, one hundred and eighty to six hundred and eighty in Piper Shores, and we're talking about two twenty-five to six hundred. Monthly fees are all approximately the same, eighteen hundred to sixty-five hundred, sixteen hundred to fifty-seven hundred, and we're talking about eighteen hundred to sixty-five hundred. Services, you know, with tweaks, there's, they're all about the same, housekeeping, meal plans, linen service, utilities, taxes, cable and internet, all included in your fees, including the nursing and the assisted living. Number of units, Riverwoods is at three hundred and sixty-seven, Piper Shores is smaller, ninety-three, and we're talking about, and these are independent units, three hundred and thirty. Riverwoods has forty-six assisted and sixty-two nursing, Piper Shores, which is a high percentage, twenty assisted and forty nursing, and we're talking about fifty assisted and thirty nursing. One of the other things we thought was interesting is the host community population. Exeter is a population of under fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand people. Piper Shores, it's four thousand people, and Portsmouth, last we knew, was a little over twenty thousand people.
Actually, Scarborough is actually nineteen thousand, not four thousand.
Really?
Yeah. It's one of the fastest-growing communities in Maine.
Huh, in two thousand and seven, because we...
Two thousand and seven, the two thousand and seven census estimate is eighteen nine eighty-three.
Oh, okay, well, we got that wrong. How did we do on Exeter?
Exeter's right.
Okay, good, so we got fifty percent great on that one. How about Portsmouth?
Portsmouth's pretty good.
Good, good, all right. I apologize for that. So any other questions on this page, the comparison page, Rick?
How about land area for, I know Piper Shores is one hundred and thirty-eight acres, but I don't know what Riverwoods is, you know?
Riverwoods is huge, because it's, you know, it's out in the country.
I'm just thinking about density, units per acre.
Yeah, I mean, we didn't get that, but it's, you know, it's got a lot of acres. I mean, it's, basically, I think the problem with Riverwoods is that it is where it is, you know, it's basically hiding our elderly, you know? Put them out to pasture, and really, it's pasture out there. So that's why we think this is a better project.
And speaking, the source of a lot of our information with regard to Riverwoods came from their legal counsel, who's been representing them for a number of years. Density was never an issue with Riverwoods, because of the enormity of the land mass involved.
Actually, my question was more on the, I'm trying to compare the density of Riverwoods, the density of Piper Shores, and the density of Borthwick Village.
Right.
And obviously, Piper Shores is ninety-three units for one hundred and thirty-eight acres, which is a big difference from you. I was just wondering whether Riverwoods was closer to your density.
No, I think they're probably closer to Piper Shores, you know, because it's so out in the country. Anything else? We'll go on to the next slide, oh, we've already seen this. Basically, once again, our location, next, Gail. This is a redrawing of our layout, you've seen the original layout, now we have a bigger building for nursing and independent, and then the other project is smaller. And as we said, there's seventy-three percent of the land is not being affected, it's left in open space. Now, one of the things in our proposal, in our proposed zoning ordinance, is that we would leave land for, I think we talked about fields, elderly component, or possibly even a railroad station, because the railroad tracks are right here. But this parcel, which we typically would be built on as an office space or whatever, we just felt we'd leave that, and that would be part of the community, you know, whatever the community felt was appropriate. So it could be, I mean, it's a big, big piece of uplands, you can see all the, this is all uplands right here. So it can be plain fields, it could be, at one point, we talked about the new elderly center there.
Don, you had a question?
Yeah, sort of expanding on that a bit, can you, this may be premature to ask this, given this slide, but it fits anywhere, I guess, public benefit. Absent the tax, the net tax income to the city, can you touch on the public benefit of what you're proposing, as you see it? I think in earlier discussions, there was some sort of a senior center, there was a number of other things, so if you could refresh us on that, please?
Sure. Our feeling is that the public benefit is that, A, this is a type of project that really is needed in Portsmouth. Portsmouth takes care of its poor elderly, but it doesn't take care of its middle-class and upper-class elderly. And there's really no place to go right now, if you want to stay near Portsmouth and go to a similar project, you go to Riverwoods, and anybody who has someone in Riverwoods knows it's a pain in the neck to get to from Portsmouth, okay? It's forty-five minutes, forty minutes from Portsmouth. So that's number one. Now, we'll take into account the wildlife habitat, we're leaving a lot more open land than an office complex would, would be allowed to, I mean, if a fully-built-out office complex. The amount of impact on the neighborhood versus the impact on, versus an office impact, what is zoned for now? I mean, this is zoned for a hospital, a new hospital could be built there with, you know, with ambulances coming in and so forth, or, you know, an emergency room-type scenario. So we have, and then we have the traffic, you know? We're developing a large piece of property, returning to the town significant taxes, which I know you told me I couldn't talk about, Don, but I had to, and having a significantly less impact on the community in terms of needs for upgraded traffic and police and fire, et cetera.
Schools.
Schools, another big item. So I think there's definitely a major public benefit here. And then, and then, as we said, this recreational area, which frankly, we'd love to see developed into fields and so forth, soccer fields and lacrosse fields or whatever, because that would just be a wonderful place for our people to walk over and watch, and it would be great for them and great for the community, for the kids who play out there, to have our people walk over and watch, sit down in the stands and watch them play. Keep everybody busy.
Cindy, you had a question?
Yes.
Mark, in looking at those, Building A through J, are those all four-to-five-story buildings, or are there parts?
Some of them, some of them are three stories, well, let's talk about stories of residential, not about the, basically, some of them are three and some of them are four.
And they look, I mean, I know we're looking down, and these aren't elevations, but they, particularly the buildings on the left side, they look of all uniform stories. Are there any, you know, is there any in your, you know, conceptual planning to this date, is there any step-down in heights here, are these all...
Oh, yeah, there will be, you know, roof heights and so forth, this is just, you know, this is very, very schematic. And part of our proposal, part of our proposed zoning ordinance is that you all would help us design it for all intents and purposes, you know, that the architectural design has to be in keeping with the community and also, I can't remember the wording, Malcolm, you might.
It's roofs and...
Right, so...
Counsel Dwyer?
Building J, that's not connected to the others, what is that?
That building is the independent and assisted, and frankly, it probably will be connected, Chris, but we left it unconnected at this point, just to show it is different. But it makes more sense to have it connected, so, you know, my wife could come down and visit me, not have to go outside.
Anthony?
Quick question, on the parcel that's sort of cut out at the top, that's not owned by you, I guess, what, is that vacant right now?
Yeah, no, there's a radio station right there now.
Okay.
Tower.
A radio tower?
Radio tower, and isn't the station there too? Yeah, isn't it? I think so, no?
It could be BBX.
Yes, it's BBX, yeah.
It's the old BBX, I think.
Oh, vacant.
Okay.
It's got other things here.
They rent out some space too, yeah.
Chris? Cindy?
The road in from Borthwick, what, do you know the approximate length of that, Mark?
No, long. I, at one point, we had it, I don't have it off the top of my, so this is all, this is, we have a right-of-way, and this is all wetlands, unbuiltable area, so basically, whether you do it office or CCRC, the road has to be that long.
Oh, no, I wasn't doubting that, I was thinking of how our firefighters and other emergency people, if in one specific phase, might feel about that length of road, and this whole issue we've discussed about whether the access to Islington...
Right.
...is emergency access.
You can see we have this emergency...
Whether it's another way in and out.
Right.
I was just going to say, just scaling off, because you've got the scale on the bottom, if you were to do a straight line from Borthwick to that first fork, it's about eleven hundred feet, which kind of relates to something else I was thinking about. The, most of these places have a common dining facility.
Yes.
Right, so...
And that, see this bigger building in here, Rick?
Right, so I was just, I was scaling off from the center of Building A to the end of Building H, and it looked like it was something more than six hundred feet. Is that, is that the kind of thing that's, just thinking about how fast people move sometimes, is that, does that seem like a, it seems like, I guess what I'm saying, it seems like it's really sprawling out rather than compact, is that...
Little carts, electric carts.
Electric carts in the car.
Exactly, look out.
They roll the parking standards.
Right.
I just, that was just a question, I guess, and I guess the, kind of the related question is, the proximity to the residence, about a hundred, looks like a little bit more than a hundred feet to the backs of the residences, is that...
Oh, I think it's more than that. The residences are back here, and you've got to go across the railroad tracks.
Yeah, well, maybe, I guess, to the railroad tracks, I was thinking of, yeah, yeah. Okay.
I think one of the issues that will have to be explored at some point is the relationship to the public and private streets, you know, that's going to be a real issue at some point, but just to raise it now, but not to really get into it.
Right.
Just a quick thing, does, looking at this plan, are you, and looking at the zoning, are you planning to get all hundred feet of frontage off Borthwick, this way, the way that?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, excuse me, we'll probably do some off of Islington, we'll probably do the hundred feet off of Islington.
You're required to have a hundred or two fifties, okay, so you'd get, so, so the access that goes out will be separated out as part of your parcel, subdivided as part of your parcel?
Right here, yes.
The one that goes out to Borthwick?
Yes.
Okay, and then you'll have to have a separate subdivision that goes down, at least onto the public, across the tracks...
Yes.
...to the BBX road?
Yes. Should I go on to the next one, John? Okay, Gail. So this is the total site, thirty-seven point eight-nine acres, and we'll quickly go to the next, which is the site excluding wetlands, twenty-six point two acres, and this is what our density was calculated off of, was the site excluding wetlands. Gail, go on to the next one? And this is, well, we do sort of have a plan of how we laid out the office. This is, this was our sketch of the office space, you can see there's one office, there are three office buildings, and the parking, so the office place, the office space plan had ten point two acres of paved area versus our project, which was four point nine acres of paved area.
And did you compare the two on pervious surface?
The, in terms of the buildings?
If you had, yeah, if you had the roofs.
No, we didn't. We probably take a little more than the office, but I can't imagine it'd be a whole lot more. But we could do that.
Just, just...
Yeah.
To make sure we're apples and oranges are keeping separate here, the other medical office buildings off of Borthwick do have underground parking, correct?
The other medical office buildings that are on Borthwick Avenue, the two new ones that were built, yes, that has underground parking.
Is this showing, for example, that there's parking underneath the office building?
This is not showing that, David.
Is it also showing that it could be more than one story?
Yes, these are four-story buildings.
Okay, so that is similar to what's on Borthwick, but you don't have the parking underneath?
We don't have the parking underneath.
Okay.
Don?
Just speculation, let's say this gets built out, you have your maximum number of units, and you're in the same boat as Riverwoods, which is, studios are wait-listed for six and seven years, and, you know, a hundred percent sold out, everything else. Next logical step is to build more. Where could you, if you could, put additional units here?
I can't, not with the density we're proposing.
That answers that question.
Right.
Thank you.
Just on parking, on the, what percentage do you know of the parking spaces are surface spaces on your plan versus...
In our plan?
Yeah.
That is on our plan, if you go back, Gail, to...
Oh, I'm sorry, I think I do have it, I think it's two sixty-nine surface to one hundred and seventy-two below grade, okay.
Right.
So it's...
And, and once again, you know, that's schematic, Rick, so, you know, that's going to change, plus or minus twenty, thirty. I mean, we just made an estimate what we could get under the buildings, based on past experience.
The office building on Borthwick Avenue also has surface parking, significant surface parking.
Medical office, they're requiring six per thousand, Michael, at this point?
Five.
Five per thousand, okay. Versus office-office is about four per thousand. And Portsmouth standards are, I think, significantly less, maybe if you go a four-story building, I would say, David, two and a half maybe per thousand or something. There's so much for the first floor, yes. So back to, on to the next, what's that? Ha-ha! I'm just trying to keep under the chairman's time limit, you know? So that's my part of the presentation. Any other questions for me? And then we'll, I think Malcolm will go through the actual ordinance, if you think that's appropriate, or do you want to have more discussion before that, John?
I'd like to, I think we've seen enough, I'd like to get into the ordinance, I think.
Okay.
I think if that's okay with everybody, I think that's probably where we want to go. Thank you, Mark.
May I address that, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, you can.
And I know that we've gone over your time limit, and I'll do the best I can to move as quickly as I can.
Thank you.
The history is that in September of last year, Rick proposed an ordinance... The history is that in September of last year, Rick proposed an ordinance, which I think he would agree, contained many unfinished components relating to density, parking, open space, and those types of matters. It was not significantly discussed by you at all in September. Now, what's happened since that time? We had a follow-up meeting in December before you, a very lengthy meeting, and aft, at the end of the meeting, there was discussion about working further on an ordinance. Most importantly, the developers met with the city administration, the city manager, and others, which has resulted in, in my view, a very significant change in the character of this project, from going from an assisted living and independent living project to a CCRC. And additionally, there was significant discussion at other stages of this process about workforce housing, which I believe was, it was concurrently felt at the March meeting here that workforce housing would not be an appropriate component of this site. And also, we have spent an extraordinary amount of time talking about how to determine whether a unit was affordable. And as such, there was discussion in March about the concept of comparing this project with CCRC projects and having you make a determination as to what, whether this is what you want for this site. So what I did was presume that workforce housing would be deleted, and as such, on the first page, utilizing the very nice job that Rick did, workforce housing in red is deleted from the proposal. When you go over to the next page, there, there is some minor wording changing, changes with regard to site requirements, but the general provisions with regard to making this an overlay zone and the amount of frontage remains unchanged. I thought my wording in C3 just was a little bit better with regard to clarifying what type of access would be provided. Now, with regard to development standards, which is very important with regard to this project, I think Rick will concur, there was no density square footage in his draft. So what we did was look at the site, look at the wetland areas, et cetera, and look at your high-density PUD projects in Portsmouth, and we came up with a proposed square footage for independent living of 3,000 square feet. And that works on the project that you see. The air, this excludes open water bodies, wetlands subject to the ordinance, 100-year flood plain and slopes exceeding 15%. As to assisted living, there was no calculation in Rick's ordinance. I probably should have just left it the way it was, because that, that would have meant there was no allocation with regard to density. But I thought it was fair from a planning perspective to establish a maximum type of component so that you would know what the developer was building. So that's what we've done with regard to assisted living and the addition of nursing, which is new, that wasn't in the ordinance at all before. And also in number four, I just clarified that the minimum size related to independent units, as counsel asked previously, to make that clear. I also provided an open space calculation. Rick's previously was 50%. We proposed 40%. My source for much of the language is section 10 dash 1506 F of your ordinance that deals with high-intensity assisted living PUDs. And so we're saying the common open space is a minimum of 40% of the developable area of the site, which shall be permanently dedicated for common open space. Such open space may include wetlands, buffer areas, and water areas, as well as any other land areas and accessory structures such as gazebo or open-sided pavilion, et cetera. However, water areas and wetlands shall not be included in calculating the minimum 40% requirement. Recreational amenities may also include, but not shall, shall not be limited to playgrounds, walking trails, picnic areas, and sitting areas. So if you have a playground, it will be part of the open space consideration. There was a proposal with regard to parking. In independent living, Rick had proposed 1.1 space. We proposed 1, which is the cha, the same as for elderly housing in your ordinance in section 10 dash 1204. With regard to the nursing units, we had to provide a, a number, because nursing wasn't in the previous proposal. We put in .05, which is consistent with assisted living CCRCs in congregant care facilities. So we felt it was consistent with that standard. Now, the significant removal in red on the next page relates to the various affordability standards that we went through before, as, as to the manner of calculating what was affordable. The applicant has proposed a diminution in the size of some of the units, modestly priced independent units, and in all candor, this ordinance removes the rather torturous process, arguably, that we went through to try and determine what was affordable. By the same token, we were very much guided by what the developer heard at the March meeting about what was presumed to be desired in the community as comparables for this type of project, namely Riverwoods and the other facility in Maine, which do not have affordability components of this size. It was also discussed, and it's not in the ordinance, but I feel I need to say it, there were some concerns about what happens if people run out of money. I had this discussion with counsel for Riverwoods, and in the history of Riverwoods, there have been four people who have come up short with regard to money, but they have never exhausted their deposits. And so as such, those four people have eaten into some of the deposits that they would otherwise have returned. There has never been a person removed from Riverwoods, based on his discussion with me, as a result of hardship.
Don, does that answer your question? You had the financial questions that you wanted to get back to. Basically, basically, if someone's run out of money, if there's, if the stock market crashed and whatever. We would then return less of their depo, oh.
We would then return less of their deposit to them.
If that is, if that's your model, then, yeah, that would answer my question.
It's the Riverwoods model, it's worked consistently, it hasn't been an issue. With regard to item number F, I'm just speaking, these are more language matters, legalese matters with regard to how to determine whether waivers will be granted. I've, on the next page, with regard to utilities, I've asked that the board use reasonable discretion with regard to granting waivers, just leaving the term absolute discretion just causes something to swell up in my body, so I just use the term reasonable.
That creates the same reaction on our part.
Exactly.
I, I understand. I know how it goes, I know how it goes. With regard to the access points, Rick's draft was at least two separate access points shall be provided to the project. We're requesting that one access point may be limited to emergency access of the two, because we'd like to diminish impacts on Islington Street, and based on our studies, we believe that one access would be sufficient. Then we've tinkered a little bit with the language with regard to the criteria for the granting of a conditional use permit. We've also said a portion of the site shall be set aside for community purposes, which may include a senior center, public recreation facility, or passenger rail station, including land area for building and parking, but that we would not be penalized on our open space if we were to donate, basically, land for that kind of a public use. In terms of phasing, you may recall there were discussions about when units would go forward, et cetera. We're saying the development would be reasonably phased over a period of years, I just put in the word reasonably. And I've also said if there was more than one type of unit, independent, assisted, and nursing, the unit built out of the project shall be proportionate to the number and types of units proposed. In other words, based on the ratios that we have now, that's the way it would proceed. However, if there was a pressing need for a higher number of assisting, assisted living or nursing units, they could be disproportionately built in terms of timing. That, in my view, has never been the concern of the board. It has always been a concern that we would proceed with independent units at the, at the expense of other units. If there was a demand that was immediate for assisted living and nursing units, that's the provision that I have put in here. Now, with regard to the large red item that we've marked out, I just want to explain what I did here. Rick's language was, nothing contained herein shall compel the planning board to approve the senior housing conditional use permit. While the intent of the section is to provide flexibility both to the board in considering an application and the applicant in designing a project, not all parcels are suitable for a senior housing facility. From a legal perspective, that means if every criteria that is contained here were complied with, the board could still say no. And what I'm suggesting is that we should work harder at defining language that makes the project acceptable. So if the project meets your criteria, it would be just like any other type of project. And so this particular type of what I'll characterize as subjective language is just an objection from a legal perspective that I have, but it's something we're happy to work with you on. In terms of the conditions of approval, I've just put in the legal word reasonable conditions, not a significant change. I struck out deed restrictions, because there are not deeds involved in this project. There's one owner, and as Mark had explained previously, we're dealing with quasi-leases of units, so in terms of deed restrictions, that would not be necessary. We also believe that anything in this project of consequence that went beyond the ordinance could also be covered by conditions of approval. And the last item in, in the revision was the deletion of the reference to regional impact. I just thought that language was surplus language, because you have that authority under state statute anyway, so it's the only reason why I'm deleting it. You may recall that when Rick first presented this in September, and when I commented on it in December, we represented that we felt the stat, the ordinance was substantially one that we could live with. And with regard to the changes that are here, but for the deletion of workforce housing and the significant deletion of the affordability component, which we believe we've done in reliance upon the March meeting, the rest of this, in my view, to a certain extent, is filling in the blanks that weren't filled in before, and dealing with some normal type of legal draftsmanship that we would hope could be further discussed if you find the project to be one that you'd like to go further with. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I'd, I'd like to minimize, rather than maximize, the changes, because from a substantive perspective in terms of the amount of red ink here, it really deals with matters, in my view, that represent the evolution of the project.
Any questions, Don?
I'm having real trouble with I, let's see, I six being deleted. Nothing contained herein shall compel the planning board to approve the senior housing conditional use permit. I, I understand and fully respect your point of view, but it is very different than our point of view. I, I believe that should remain, I, I really do.
You know, Don, I hope we get to a point where that's our issue.
Yeah, Don, take a look at the bigger picture. The bigger picture is, is this something that we want to go forward with? We're gonna quibble over a lot of those details.
Oh, I thought we were, I thought this was up for discussion.
It is, but I mean, you're looking at, one section is not gonna make or break, it's gonna be whether or not this concept is important. Let's go for the forest.
Look at the macro, I guess the bigger.
Cindy?
If I can make a suggestion, maybe what we should do is ask questions, you know, rather than getting into a discussion back and forth, and then the board could discuss amongst themselves, because I, I know what you're saying, Don, I mean, I went through and, you know, marked the things that decreased the planning board's authority, but maybe we could discuss amongst ourselves in a two-tiered way. One, first is, what about this as a concept? Are we still okay with workforce housing being out, you know, that kind of thing? So that's what I suggest, we can ask kind of informational questions to them and then be able to discuss amongst us.
I would agree, and I, and I think if we're getting down to the, the seeds and stems down here at some point, I think that, to me, implies that we're, we're kind of headed in the right direction, so I want to make sure we are, in fact, heading in the right direction.
Our, our presumption was that the plan that we're presenting to you tonight through Mark's presentation is a different plan.
It is, absolutely.
There's no question about it.
Correct.
It brings a different kind of project to this community. If you are in favor of that project, this draft, reasonably consistent with what Rick did before, with modifications, can, can reach that result. But you have to make the threshold decision that this plan, which is different than anything else that we brought you before, is something you want to do.
Just a couple of things. One, I mean, I fully agree that the, the big red deletion on page one and the extensive one on page four are what we talked about. It's just, we talked about taking out all of the affordability piece, because it was just too hard to do, and the assisted living and nursing, nursing component. I, I just want to back up for a second. When we did the September draft, you've said a number of times that it was my draft, I think a lot of people had a lot of input into it, including a previous consultant who was also working for the city. And I, at the time, we clearly said it was a working draft, so I think, you know, it's, we weren't ready to say this was the final draft at that point, and, and I'm, and I'm not ready to say that the stuff that you haven't changed is final yet either. One of the things that, that occurred to me as I was reading the draft yesterday was that the way, well, let me back up. The issues that we laid out in, in August had to do with the levels of, of senior housing, going from independent to assisted to nursing and, and all that sort of stuff, the mix between those different types of uses, and we've talked about some of that tonight, the issues of tenure, ownership versus rental, we, we talked about those things. We talked a lot about affordability and different ways to get affordability, and I, and one of the big decisions that was made was really to pull that out, and, so that's a question as to whether that's still there, but I think it makes it a lot easier to do if you pull that out. The scale and density was another question, and community benefits, and then the whole comparison between as of right office use versus, or other, or any other use, any, any non-residential use versus, senior residential versus any other type of residential use. We had all those discussions. But one of the things that, that jumped out at me as I was reading this was that, and I think this, we need to think about this, do we want to be, this to be a senior housing provision, or do we want it to be a continuing care retirement community provision? Because as it's written right now, it could be entirely independent living with no, with no nursing or, or assisted living. Because if you note on, at the top of page two, under B, it says, "Planning board, make grant a conditional use permit to authorize a senior housing facility," and it defines a senior housing facility as a wide range of things, one of which is a continuing care facility, but certainly independent living units is, is another one that's, you know, totally senior, anything, anything that's, any housing that's restricted to people 62 years and older is a senior housing. So I think that's, that is a big decision that needs to be made, whether, whether, or it's a big issue that has to be considered, whether you want this to be a senior housing facility, a senior housing ordinance, which could include 100% independent living with no congregant care, with no congregant facilities, or whether you want it to be a continuing care retirement community, in which case it should be defined that way. That was one big, one big item that I noted. And I think the other, all the other items are, as Malcolm said, fairly, you know, they're, they're fairly technical. It's the way you, the way you write the wording in terms of density and in terms of what criteria the planning board has to approve things on and what the process is. And I think there, there are some things that can still be improved in here, I made a number of notes on, but I think that the, the big issues are affordability, do we want it or not, and this, this draft says we don't want it, and I think that was a discussion that was, went in that direction to a certain extent. And the other question is, what type of, what types of senior housing, and what's the mix?
Cindy?
And I think, you know, these guys have presented their proposal and they have every good faith of carrying out this proposal, but we don't know what's gonna happen in the future. We, we have to think about, not the presentation, but if we liked the presentation, making sure that it's all covered in here, just in case. You sell the property to somebody else and we go, uh-oh, the new buyer actually wants to put apartments in there, you know? So not doubting you and your good faith, but we need to think about that.
And, and actually, that was another point I did, quickly wanted to make, which was the deed restriction question. You were focusing on your project, we were thinking about the larger range of options so that if we wrote this so that it could be used for a different project, deed restrictions might make sense. it could be used for a different project, deed restrictions might make sense. It doesn't make sense for your project, but it says, I think it says covenants or deed restrictions or something like that, so it seemed like it might make sense for some projects.
Right, in terms of the definition that we're proposing, we're proposing a CCRC. That was the second slide that we proposed. The CCRC will assure you of the result that we are presenting doesn't permit us to do other types of units here. The reason I didn't take senior housing facility out of the definition was that I wasn't certain where you were going with regard to the zone.
And that's why I raised the question.
But similarly, leaving in the definitional terms assisted living, congregant care facility, and independent living, all mesh into the CCRC definition, so that's why I left it in there. If you want to be assured that a different type of use is prevented, then adopt the CCRC as the controlling component of the zone. Anthony?
Yeah, I mean, I guess that's a great point, and I think something we'd want to do. I mean, from my perspective, the changes they've made, I think, are very positive changes from where they were a couple months ago in December, so those are types of changes that I'd want to make sure are incorporated and are definite, which sounds like they'd be willing to do. But yeah, I mean, again, I think the nursing home aspect of it, for me, is a very positive change.
Don?
Just a clarification, under site requirements in this draft must be the site for which the conditional use permit is granted.
What page, Don?
I'm sorry, page two.
Item C.
Item C, thank you. Located within a half mile and contain at least 35 acres and all that. Is there another parcel within a half mile of the hospital that has 35 acres?
No.
So this model that we're doing here is specifically for, I'm asking the question.
I mean, technically, you might be able to assemble something, but it's largely defining the site.
Okay.
There was a concern that this might be located in other sections of the community. That's why we tried to narrow it with regard to the proximity and the size, so that, I mean, there's a totally different way of doing this. You could just rezone this as a CCRC zone rather than being an overlay. It would not be spot zoning, in my opinion, but we've been talking about an overlay all through this process, so.
So my question was just, are there any other parcels that this would fit?
We do not seek to have this happen someplace other than where we're proposing it. Right.
I think if I go back to what I said before, if we want to get some sense in the last 27 minutes of tonight, if we could, if we have informational questions for them, if we can ask them, but then if we could have them sit back and be able to discuss so we can get some sense of where we're going with this, it would be helpful, like the question of, are we all happy that the affordable housing's out, that kind of thing, so that's my comment.
I withdraw. Counsel Dwyer?
I'll just pick up on what Anthony said. I think this does meet the various concerns that over time this board has put forth as it relates to this parcel and this use. That doesn't mean that the board isn't concerned about affordable housing and whatever, but as it relates to the proposal, the parcel, the need, the use. And then I have what might be a smaller question, and you know, if this fits in the too small to talk about question. I was curious about the parking, the parking dimensions really only relating to the units, and they seem reasonable for what I saw there, but I know the parking at Riverwoods, that has been a huge issue over time. And so, given the rather labor-intensive nature of this kind of business and the visitor-intensive nature, I wonder if there needs to be a different way of looking at parking in addition to what's there.
We're happy to look at it.
Yeah, and I appreciate that you're trying not to pave over all this area, but it does seem that's something to look at because I know that's an ongoing problem with these types of facilities.
Mel?
Thanks. I think you guys have gone a long way to doing what you've been asked to do based on the minutes that I've reviewed, and I want to say that I very much appreciate your giving us comparison data, because from a master planning perspective, we don't have any basis for saying there's a need for a CCRC facility in our town. We can speculate, but what you've done in giving us Exeter's and Scarborough's occupancy rates shows to me that in this relatively close community, there is some need for this facility that may not have been perceived at the time of the master plan, so I want to emphasize that this is, from a planning perspective, justified by what's in the community. One of the other things you said, Mark, that I, in my long ago planning history, have always tried to emphasize, is the need not to segregate seniors from the rest of the community. And while I appreciate your openness to the community as a whole and bringing in community facilities, I want to put in front of you and in front of the planning board a concept of community interfacing that we don't have. Now, I think that that raises some issues. I mean, you know, one of the issues is access and using the Islington Street side as a point of access, but you know, that playing field, for example, or that area that could be used for playing fields, well, there's no way to get there. I mean, not to say that you couldn't come up the long road, but you know, then you'd have to park and whatever. I'm not complaining. I think you've done a great job.
That adds up to city-owned land.
I know that. So, you know, as part of our planning and drafting and overlay zoning ordinance, I think that if we include some stronger element of community interfacing, we can guarantee that what we're creating is not an isolated senior facility. And then the last bit, and another point I want to emphasize, is I think this is ideally suited to a planned unit development concept rather than a rezone, because I think this is a unique project, its density is high. I have never seen this board approve a, what is it now, 300, no, 410-unit living facility. So I think having the additional controls or input that a PUD gives us is really important for the board. That's it.
I guess I want to go back to what Cindy said, is that, you know, at least my opinion is, and I do echo the majority of the board, that, you know, this is probably the, one of the few projects in the six years I've been on the board that, depending which way the wind blows, I could go either way. And I think the CCRC that I see here tonight, to me, I mean, Mark, the one point you made that really struck me is, you know, I've got kids and they've got grandparents, and I think to put them out to pasture, not give them a ball field, I know it's a small component, and I know that's not the crux of what we're talking, but to think that elderly people could go and walk and watch a bunch of young kids running around saying, gee, I remember when, to me, that's a huge component. This plan, to me, is a drastic improvement, or at least my perception is, that it's a drastic improvement. I'd like to get from this board, if we can let Malcolm know, hey, we think we're heading in the right direction. If we need a subsequent work session where it's just the board, I know there's a couple of members that aren't here, that maybe we look at this and meet in a week or two, and then just the board itself, we have our, maybe our final discussion, but I don't know if that's palatable to other board members, but I think we ought at least maybe let the developer know what our thoughts are, let them go away, and then we can discuss it on our own, because typically I find, just like the signage issue, I think it's all resolved, and then Counsel Dwyer, if somebody makes a comment, and I say, that's, it always seems like at the 11th hour, we pull out these great comments, so I don't want that ship to sail and us not have the opportunity to readdress it, so, Don?
I would agree. I've probably have been one of the more vocal skeptics of this whole proposal since this started, but this brings some clarity to the whole process, which has been lacking. Doesn't matter why, it just has been. It's always been sort of looking into a fog. The one area that I am concerned about, and to build on my own support of this, is the public benefit, absent the tax revenue, and I want to keep that, because that's not a good reason for approving a project that it's going to bring a million six to the city, or something, some big number like that. I would like to see more clarity in public benefit. Over the evolution of this proposal, there were all kinds of different things mentioned, senior center, among other things. To reinforce my support of this, I would love to see a lot more effort put into the public benefit side of it, however that works out. But otherwise, I think the proposal has improved dramatically, and I thank you for it. It's brought clarity and, clarity, I think that's the magic word, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I guess, jump in, because I probably, even more than Donald, have been the most vocal opponent of this so far for a variety of reasons, and wanted to echo what other people have said. I am really pleased with what's been presented, and like Mel, I feel like the comparative data was really helpful in getting some solid facts in terms of need and where we're at, variety of different things. So I feel much more secure moving forward with this and giving us some space to kind of play around with any details or 11th hour revelations.
John?
I'll just echo what Paige said and everyone else said. I, so far, I find it a more compelling presentation than in the past. I think there is a need for it. I think the consequences for that parcel of land are less intense than what some other projects might be, so I'm interested in seeing this go forward.
If, again, I'm looking for, yes, Cindy?
I think we're headed in the right direction, but I don't think we should lose sight of some of the issues that may be of concern. I mean, for me, I'm still concerned about the access piece, particularly since we're going to have seniors living out there. I'm a little concerned about phasing, because I'm not sure quite how that would work. I know density went down, but I'm still thinking that's probably would be one of the densest developed sites in the city, so I don't think we're done with that issue. And just, you know, as Don started things off, there are a lot of changes that I think we need to, I don't want the applicant to go away tonight, at least from my perspective, feeling like, oh, they loved the draft, because there's a lot of changes that are needed in the draft, from my perspective, because so many things were removed that gave a lot of authority and management or control to the planning board, and I necessarily hear compelling cases for why some of those things went out. So I just don't want you folks to go away tonight with the thought, oh, they all liked it. This board member sees that there's a lot of things that we have not yet discussed around those issues, reasonableness, density, access, and the like.
Counsel Dwyer?
Cindy, could you clarify your concerns about access? Because I think they could go in a lot of different directions, and I think one of the, I think we have all, I mean, it feels like it was years ago now, but the concerns about, from neighbors or whatever, of dealing with access from Islington, and I think this is pretty well dealt with, what looked at one point like a deal breaker on the original, I mean, the previous version of this project. So your access concerns?
My access concerns are a, maybe an 1,100-foot-long roadway leading to a whole lot of older people, some of who may have medical conditions, and I know that the other end is an emergency outlet, but the other end also crosses a railroad track.
Sure.
And it would be kind of an unusual situation to have such a long road in. I don't have the solution, I just want to make sure that I understand exactly what's proposed, because it's been through a lot of iterations, and I think David might want to add to my.
Yeah, I think I raised this, you know, we, staff has raised this issue consistently, that access and egress is an important issue. Normally, you would probably have two points of access to this. There is an argument to be made that a concentration of population, they probably would like to be able to go out to the Plaza 800, and there's a lot of elements that go into that that may have to have a larger review. Another one is, the city may not choose that it should have any ownership in anything that crosses a railroad track, in which case you may have a cul-de-sac that is exceeding, should we say, 500 feet, which is what the subdivision rules and regulations, let's say is a minimum. None of these are necessarily deal breakers, but we've got to look at them. The public road for BBX, to my knowledge, does not cross the rail. It comes up just short. The proposal here from Borthwick, I'm beginning to wonder if the right-of-way is proposed to be 100 feet wide to give it that access and frontage off of Borthwick, or is it going to be by some other method, such as a cul-de-sac off of a street where then it becomes private? So I think the deputy city manager is very correct. Access and egress is really an important issue that's got to be threshed out a little further.
Right, and just to echo David, I'm not, any of the things I'm raising, I'm not thinking, oh, it's a deal breaker, that's, I'm just thinking, they're very unresolved, and in my mind, and I think if we had, you know, we just got this Red Line copy tonight, and that's a really useful thing to spend some quality time with, to understand this project after seeing their very good presentation.
Don?
Our minutes of 2:14:08, I made a note here that there was quite a discussion about that, and the consensus was, and I believe both David and Attorney Sullivan agreed, that one entrance is possible, one entrance and exit is possible in that piece of land, assuming that it moves forward and all of that, so frankly, I don't, absent what David just said about length and cul-de-sacs and all that, I think just the idea that there's one entrance and exit is a viable idea, and whether we agree with it or not's another story, but that remains to be seen.
Anthony?
Yeah, I guess where I come from is that the, the concept is a good one. I think the changes that have been made are very positive, and we still have a lot of work to do on the draft and some of the edits, and we would need at least another work session of some sort to sit down and start going through those.
Let me tell you what my thoughts are. I, at least in my head, I'm relatively crystal clear on the concept. I think Malcolm and Mark, you guys did a nice job tonight. I think, assuming the board feels that way too, now we know what we're getting, where before, I think Don said it's like looking into the fog. I think what we need as a board is now to look at the draft ordinance itself, now that we understand what we have. I think we need to take time as a board and go through this and get the egress issues done, or the density or the parking, and at least that's my thought on that.
I agree, and maybe, you know, staff could be, Rick and David could be, and Bob could be useful, they've heard what some of the issues are raised, to address some of those things. Like, I appreciate you reading out the minutes from that last meeting, or that meeting, whatever date that was, but we need to relook at that.
And if the board feels the same way, that we're clear on the presentation, that, you know, I'd like to, you know, strike while the iron's hot, and the next possible time, leave an hour or an hour and a half that we could have a work session, if it's before or another work session or before a public hearing, I'd like to do that.
I think, given the schedule, probably an hour before the next regular meeting might be appropriate.
You know, I feel like an hour, we'd just be getting going on it.
Well, you know, if we want to do, have a separate work session, we can do that. I think, at least, I'm a little bit more energized now that I know what we're doing. Now I feel like I can focus on one thing. If, I'm seeing a lot of heads now, maybe we pick a couple-hour work session with just the board, so.
I think this is a large enough and important enough proposal and project to warrant another, you know, put the time into it, let's get working on it, so.
Do we want to direct staff, and again, I applaud the applicant. I think if we could meet in the next two or three weeks and not wait till six weeks or eight weeks, and then we're into warm weather, if that seems fine, we can direct staff the next couple or three weeks to meet.
We could coordinate with the chair to come up with a couple of dates and get that out to you. I assume you want it televised, and I assume it would be in this room, and because of the budget and other things, there may be some issues there, but we'll find the next available Thursday night.
Yeah.
You know, I agree, I would much rather do it sooner rather than later. Is there any taboo against not meeting on a Thursday? You know, if that is not an option for this room?
I don't believe so, but only if you want to make sure it's televised and making
I don't believe so, but only if you want to make sure it's televised and making those arrangements, but we could do it other than.
If we really do want to meet sooner rather than later, we might need to be a little open-minded about dates, because this room is just so blocked.
Thursday, the fourteenth. The council is meeting Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday that week, so I.
So you might, we got a free night, Chris, trying to fill?
I got a free night.
Well, staff will look at that.
Let's staff do it, and they can, they can give us a couple of dates, and I hope we've given you some direction tonight that you can move forward with.
Could I make a suggestion? Most of this ordinance has not been written by me. It's been written by Rick.
Correct.
I've made some comments with regard to it. I have a sense, he has a sense of what your intentions are. I think you should ask him to try and draft an ordinance that is consistent with what he's heard tonight.
Well, I think that's, I think that was Cindy's point, that they can do that in the interim and bring us suggestions in our next work session, so.
Great, that sounds fine. And in our, our position, of course, to the extent that you would wish to have my input or our input, we're certainly happy to provide.
We'll leak, we'll leak the date of the meeting to you, so you know.
I still do have a very, very large question that I asked earlier, though, about, do we, does this want to be a continuing care retirement community ordinance, or does it want to be something that would allow a whole range of things, including simply an independent living? And I'm not sure I got the answer to that.
Well, would it?
How about a little straw poll?
Yeah.
Well, but I guess we could, but, but the provision in here that says thirty-five acres within a half a mile, does that pretty much preclude anything else?
I guess what I'm saying, no, it doesn't. And because, because it could say, I mean, if we pass this ordinance, and for some reason this doesn't go forward, and somebody comes in with an age-restricted development of.
All right, good, yeah.
And.
Well, I would, I would definitely want it to be the continuing care. I think we've, we've worked very hard to.
Okay, I've got unanimous nod, so it'll be a CCRC.
Clarity, the magic word.
Okay, so everybody's head nodding, right, okay?
Yeah, before we adjourn too, if we do pick a date other than Thursday, we're going to need board members to indicate rather quickly that they can come, because if we only get three here, it's not going to do any good. I mean, I'm assuming that we want to get a good supermajority, shall we say, say like two-thirds of the membership.
It'll be nice if we could get everybody. I mean, like Don said, this is a big application, and everybody comes well-prepared, so I hate to have somebody.
That's why Thursdays tend to work easier, but we can try.
Right, and I'm not, you know, I was, I mean, if we can find a Thursday, great, within our lifetimes.
Mel.
I was wondering if you'd be comfortable just having, for those of us who have input for Rick, communicating that either here or while we're all assembled? Like, I really would like to see some community, some greater emphasis on community interface, like what you were saying. I would like to see maybe some of that focus on green space, or LEED certified, or whatever we were doing in our other zoning review, to be reflected in this, because it does stand apart as a PUD. Parking, looking at parking, looking at access, as we go through with the draft, I'd like to see these things addressed.
And I think that would be the crux of, of the next work session, to get it to where we've crafted the majority, and there'll be some, some ancillary things that we'll need to come up with, but.
Just a question on expectation, is, my expectation was not that Rick would take their version of the ordinance and come back and revise it, but I was picturing that staff could look at some of these, you know, really review, legal and planning staff really review the density issue, the access issue, and not come back with rewritten text, because we'll just have too many different versions of this, but respond to what has been deleted in red and added in blue, you know, as, because, I mean, there's not that much, you know, there's only a few general categories.
I think we need, just need a comfort level and get some of the loose items.
If you just strike reasonable, you have three-quarters of.
Don't use the word reasonable.
Or add un.
We're getting close to, and I, again, I'd like to thank Malcolm and Mark, it was breath of fresh air seeing tonight's presentation, so. Anything else from any other board members? Do you have a call for adjournment?
Close.
Good night, thank you.